What's the...
So now... Want to check there? Quality.
You know your account eh, you see?
Tony, have you lost your phone just like that? Hey, where is my phone meanwhile? Eh, mine is here.
You have stopped streaming eh?
Hmm?
You have stopped.
Hmm, it is still streaming. Tony, what's your email address? Where are you, Tony?
K I Z I.
K I Z I?
B W.
B W E?
T O N Y.
Hmm?
T O N Y. Gmail, yeah.
So co-brew eh, you're...
It's a young... Hey!
Did, how about this one?
Cool. At this point... Have you dead gone? That's the... Where the hell have they gone? Because you strained the eye. Yeah, actually yesterday the trauma say... But this couple is one that... Well, I think your eyes are all young. Sorry, this time you... Deo minimized his screen time. I'm just... So when I move right... Who is the camera? Excuse me? Excuse me?
So... Eh, J C?
That's the one. That's the other.
Eh.
So you're not going to use it for the...
Eh. Hello? Hello?
Hello?
India pulled down Deo.
And I use my foot.
Yeah.
This is Deo. But you can also give him the sound wave. No, I've seen that before today.
Eh, we have some lakes.
Well, it's great. It's great. Lots of water. Such a great... But of course, when I put in... That, I don't do it. If I could, please look. I'll sit for your eyes. Okay, maybe we can... Please, I can sleep with you.
We are going to... So we are one of the one that kind of is located in... About here as in Yilsef. I tell you what young boy, I will... It is that...
Incorporated. So Hati, uh, Ntwasako Sananga. Ntwasako Zalinki, your ministry for this livestream. It is one thirty.
Yeah, it might change it.
Let me see.
Uh, good morning everyone. Uh, want to welcome you to this engagement. Our registration is ongoing, please if you are not fast by another step or kindly, pass there and register. And we waited after registration, we do a breakfast to have tea. As we wait for the minister to start officially. Because before the minister and other minister officials are not here, we may not start officially. But I know, Roman our leaders, they want to find some other things when they are done. How like tea? So when tea is ready, we shall get a prayer. We go for it. And then when we receive the minister, we shall do, uh, our anthems. We begin with national anthem, Islamic anthem, then Torah people anthem. I know we have other cultural institutions here. But why we are doing Torah people anthem, we are host, we are host. And then these anthems are done in reverse order at the end. They build up the anthems, the Islamic anthem, the Hainz, the... Either at the beginning or at the end. So our program is very clear. Uh, if we are come early at night as we have communicated, we have started. But nevertheless, we shall manage this program. You trust me, we shall manage it. Um, our program, once we start, we shall introduce ourselves. We shall go each other, shall use little time to introduce ourselves. To each other. But uh, our guests that have been invited, others are drinking ice, others are steaming away. We are giving them, we have like twenty minutes for it to be ready. I'm sure without them, other guests would have come in. Thank you.
Ministry.
Hmm. G O U.
G O U.
Uh, Jim, Jim Odetkun.
Hmm, that's right.
Admin. I think it's admin slash admin.
I think it's admin slash admin. Now I think someone from workers do this, I think, in first program.
Gandhi, the number ends with, um, Gandhi, the number ends with eighty. The one they have sent the code to. It's a live event, so we're mixing.
Think I'm the downhill myself.
Ah, Bila now has photos.
These ones are carrying.
I should know. You see, they sent the number. They sent verification code, the number that ends with eighty. The number ends with eighty.
Eighty percent. Hmm, let's put in the number.
Yeah, it's that number, hmm, one number.
Zero seven five three.
Zero seven five three.
One eight seven.
One eight seven.
Nine eight seven.
Hmm, Alinka. I've given it.
I think I send them like a select.
Ah, you're not understanding.
But that's boy is prominent.
It's where we had our games over the weekend.
So, you know, the selectors, I was very proud.
It's on Kam, it's on Cassessa Road.
It's both Cassessa Road and Kamanga Road. Select, the select, the same person around Cassessa and Kamanga Road.
It's called.
Central is called. It's empty red, we're getting red. Me, I'm about to get a prayer for the tea, people get tea, when the minister is here, we do marathas.
We do introductions, prayer, tea first.
We're doing introductions.
I think we can do introduction. We have to wait for the minister.
Let's do introductions, prayer, tea.
We live, we live. He doesn't, I know how very well. Actually, he wants things when other things are done.
Let's start with prayer, introductions and tea, then when she comes, we go to the, and then we go marathas.
So we do.
We can pick any pastor. We do introduction, prayer, introductions and tea, then we go to other things after.
Young girl, Gandhi, Indians, we are waiting for him, we give him like a video call, not just a call, not a video call. These days, my phone loses, oh, a bit of fast thing.
The PlayStation, how long have you used it?
It's been four years, but.
The PlayStation. We are selling phones, we refuse to pick, now you are there with natural. Hmm, we sell phones, forty seven phones.
I'm supposed, I'm supposed to get a tab, I will have like a tab.
I'll see how they'll grab your tab and compare how they get to talk.
Hot cake, hot cake.
Message.
You know how he, he joke, never seen me, tukandarada. So relax, sorry, tukagela nankla, tuzinaham.
There you are, you know.
Can can you look, Kugan?
Hmm, which one?
In Masaka, in Maginari, in May, Feb, this year. Tukagela nankla, na na, na matini.
I thought you were talking. Oh, I can't. It's a window, which one?
In Masaka, out tukatul Masaka.
Yes.
Tuamara tuagenakalu.
No, abolish. It's a cool joke.
Eh, I think you were, I think you're the new.
It's a cool joke.
So you can not varant.
I wrote, but it didn't, I wrote, no, actually. Five nine. Fifty five, seventy five, eight six.
Good, we are in.
Yes. I don't remember.
You were in any, anybody in this area?
Eh, I think, eh, again, I think, we joke, we joke, I'm supposed to talk, no, I'm, I'm joke, eh.
Then we joke.
I love that, a cool joke. I think it's a get along with my people.
Tony, I need Tony. Eh, Gandhi, it's a good. And now we have, I want to stream, how do I stream?
Before, was it streaming?
Eh, but that was main, now it is M Y H.
You have access? You go to it?
It's the one here.
Who is inside of the team?
Where's that option? Ah, what's up? Send it on email, I go there and. So after we, this looks like, is it that? Welcome. Hello. Photo. Life's friend, the minister of God. This is good now. Hati, how do we? It's good. Ah, it's been clearer.
Begin prayer, dead introductions and tea. By luck, when the minister comes and people feast. Good morning once again. Once that our program, we have wasted enough time. We will have a prayer. I know within us who have invited, we just need us. The health coordinators of the leaders, managers, donations. Because we expect Father Julie for the Catholics, Father Salom for the. Mesolages. All right, coordinator from the S D H R. Coordinator from the Bonn again.
You're streaming.
The Muslim. So we have prayer, then we do self-introduction, we go for tea. Have you not wasting time, you want to invite Pastor Leger? Is the health coordinator for the Bonn again, give us a prayer? Then we do self-introduction. And then we go for tea. As the minister comes in, we shall start our program.
The one percent of. It's open this.
We have the ones from the city head of Lisa.
We have.
For the representative. We have for the state mayor.
And then right.
If he's not in the house, we let him, any other people that is around. From the invaded districts, we give the box. Then we proceed with our program. As we've mentioned, pastor, give us a prayer. There's some celebrities and then we pray from where we are. Father, we just want to thank you every time. We thank you for this workshop. We thank for the people who have been invited here. And officials from Kampala. From different sectors. From different organizations that have come here. To get more issues and learn more about organization. But we pray and declare, we call this workshop, three brothers. That everything we learn is worthy. If you are known to our spirit and to our souls. But those with cake and breakfast that you're gonna take. Let it give us more energy to work on the growth of our name. But we pray, to the Lord Jesus Christ, that you will save.
Amen.
God bless you. And I'm David, I'm a prosecutor. From Fort Porto, Prince of the Church. And the host, health coordinator. For the Bonn again, Prince of the Church, St. Forte. I, God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor, and Pastor Lisa. Good day, prayer. I'm Pastor Sanpre Sijen. Health coordinator, we're the same country, S D H R. From Kampote, P, Muzurkan.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Mumbaba Stacey. I come here to help this worker. Working with the Hook Health Center for.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Katra Lewis. From the Hook Health Center for.
Praise good. I'm calling Mayor Collessa Ochak. With the Health of the Central Vision.
I'm calling Katrina Asham from Wungadu Sub County. I'm working with the Good Health Center for the Range.
I'm Chairman Richard. From Gustan, Gansu. I'm working as a health guard. Health coordinator worker. As a payment expert client, thank you. All is good. Um, I'm basically this. This coordinator. Charles Count. Charles is three.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I'm excited for October meeting.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Ram, I'm Ramamane. From Alteknik, Dubai. So change anything.
Good morning, everyone. Doctor Big, Christopher. Good morning to you all. Doctor Karma Frederick, D H one.
Morning, everyone. I don't think since I'm in here, and I'm representing the D H O, C H. The change of John.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Joseph Monishaw for the H D, Cheltenham District.
Morning, everyone. I'm Sabid Skew, Chief Personnel Director. I'm Paulus.
My name is Kahu Enti. I'm the district director, personnel chief in Tauroko.
Good morning. My name is Julius Warlow. I'm representing the city manager of the city.
My name is Kristen Frank. From Karabi. Attached to Karabi, the seventy-three.
Good morning, members.
My name is Namara Brian. Health instructor, Chongas of Kampute. John by the second three.
Good morning, everyone. Um, three can go, I think, of the district deputy for Karabari. Thank you for coming, thank you for having us.
Good morning, everyone. I'm consideration, I have assistant drug in the full city.
Good morning, Ray Naya, I'm a health instructor, the scientific.
Morning, everyone. Casemere for his brain air. I'm a health assistant.
Morning, everyone. I'm a nurse, I'm a commander worker, I'm a worker. The court of Francis, I'm the director worker, I'm the director.
Morning, everyone.
Let me go through the section and have it.
Morning, I'm Charles Bukanto. The prime minister of the Gwabwaba, who do you join?
Morning, everyone. I'm Babaya William. Chairman Karabari Association.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Amir Wambani. And this particular director comes, Karabari District.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lucy Kahud. I'm the acting S H O. In charge of environmental health at Koto City.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bridget Fowen, Lieutenant Swak in the U B C.
Good morning, my name is Niko Maraling. Working with the forty-three.
Good morning, everyone. I'm the only Zora, I'm the assistant, I'm the most effective doctor. I'm the oldest doctor.
Good morning, everyone. Editor Trinum Juney. I'm here in half of the program manager, Birekanda. Nice meeting you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anna Tahirwa. A D H O, Chair of the Matana Church, of Karabari District. Thank you.
Good morning, Tussi Kavasuzi. I'm the acting E D H M C H. I'm your work.
Good morning, I'm Twane Munkisa. I'm the director. And I'm a trainer with Minister of United. I'm here for the regional coordinator, United.
Good morning, my name is Wilson Bruton. I'm the acting E D H M C H for Karabari District.
I greet you in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. The Lord of the prophets is in the name of the literature, says the Lord of the District.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm senior citizen of Israel. And the elder of O P R, Roko District. Good morning, everyone. I'm his veteran information.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Claire Tumisime. I'm a program commissioner, I'm the chief.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mary Anno Kenge from Pah.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deor. I work with the party as a senior program manager. So trying to fit the shoes of our county director. And we're not able to be here with us, thank you.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I'm Cyrus Zaymarami, the future of the city of Rokon.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Omar Kenneth Riando. Representing the tax operators.
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Philip Nakalawa. And I'm from the Ministry of Health.
Good morning, my name is Joshua Klein. I work with the chairman of Karabari Hospital. And the chairman of my district, so Kalash, he said, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I don't have Kalash, my name, from the District of Rokon, Ashramani, the Division. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Saul Orvillen. I work with Bayla Uganda, and I'm here on behalf of communications, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Stephen O'Negan is my name. I work with Bayla Uganda.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My youngest procedure, I work with Pah, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kafey Faid, I work with Bayla Uganda.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Doctor Bahisi, Akbar Biton Sarayi. At the city executive consultant for Populon Fund. I'm also representing the commissioner, the productive place.
Thank you, Captain. You're welcome. Um, our tea is ready. Uh, which I did it by the director. Our tea is ready. This, how many drinks should we take? I'm ready. If you are not ready, please, let us start the drinks, please. Our tea is ready. Our tea is ready. We are well, it's already.
It is still, it is still in, you're still in introductions.
Yeah, now. It's a much better, I think.
You first move on, on the side, you're blocking, I use. Hmm. She about to reach. Hmm? Now I could say. Now I could say, let me ask Kajoga.
I see, see, the president, the president, the next president, after the diving, there's no picture. Try to do this projector here, and I see whether it shows.
Okui, you, you blocked, during introductions, you blocked all my people.
Sure.
You should stand on the outside.
Yeah, I was actually. I thought I was moving the microphone. I thought I was moving the microphone.
Yeah, but move on the outside, not inside, the side. Yes, you were moving inside, but you were holding a mic, but you should have gone. Uh, the, I wanted to alert you that the camera is here. So when you're moving, move on the, on the side.
Outside.
Eh, outside.
The outside, now if I'm taking the microphone, so much.
Yeah, you can pass, but when you reach there, just.
Give and move.
Stand in a way that you can see this. That it's capturing the person. Uh, in a way that is not, you're not blocking the person who has a mic. The, the focus is this one, eh? So make a way for.
I make, I move our.
Eh, eh, just make a way for this one. Hey, just make a way for this one. Yeah. Um, Deo, is this good? No, I can't focus, yeah.
Let me get in, let me get this number.
It's okay. The only, the only, it's not, it's not an anomaly. This point there is for what my country should have been here. Because this is where the speech ends, so she might stand thinking. She's continuing.
Nazakwach David.
Nazakwach David, maybe.
Like when we give it her and she will quickly. The rules through and no.
S?
Is S W X on cups?
First one is this one. Big S.
Do enough.
Maleri Katsindira. Like, at least we have.
I'm here for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know he's a joke.
Colleagues, those are out, you are clearly carry your cups and resume our program. I would say, a request we get back and because resume our program. We can as well have one empty, you can carry your cup and then we start. Colleagues, those are out, you are clearly carry your cups and resume our program. Clearly carrying your cups. On our program, after the minister has arrived, we shall have items. I will already pray. We are expecting the Minister of State for Paper and Paper here. We have a moment, it is a hunger to be with us and some ministry officials. That will come back. We was expecting the Chairperson and Service Commission, a former DG, Dr. Henry Bebesan, to be with us. After the items, we shall have remarks or having remarks from the City Health Officer. Will be followed by, we expected the City Mayor. And to have agreed that any Chairperson of the district that have been invited. Will be in that position. Then we shall have remarks and the meeting objectives. By the Senior Executive Director for Portorion and Foreign Hospital. At the same time, they represent the Commission on Collective Health, Dr. Guy Mitchell. We shall have malaria vaccination introduction presentation by Dr. Akozatje from the Ministry of Health. We shall have remarks from the Chairperson Service Commission, Dr. Henry Bebesan. Then we shall have keynote speaker from our chief guest, who is the Minister of State for Paper and Paper here. We shall have a panel discussion. I'm sure those that are going to take part in the panel are already aware. They are already aware of what we would discuss. Our panel will sit up here and I will tell you, later on, I will tell you how we manage each of you. And then after the panel discussion, actually, the panel shall have Dr. Richard Opeti, the DHO of Ngaob District. We expect the LC five. We are expecting the LC five, Gendutu. Honorable, of Hayaum. We also expecting the DHD, Carvery. Teddy Catherine. We are expecting the MCH, ADH of MCH, Tora District. Rudy Wilson. The Minister, Cultural Minister. I'm sure he's also informed. And then from Haji Ray, Ayolo Machine, for the leaders. Everyone has gotten the questions, which you get to know how long. One thing that has been allocated to each of you. Thank you. Colleagues, I think we resume. As we're waiting for the minister, we can do anything. As always, very busy. Actually, we. Without wasting time, we. The CHO to give remarks. We shall start officially when the minister comes in, but let's do other things, we can't go in longer. Julius, you all come and have a listen to the process. And as Julius is coming, we expect to have RBCs and RSCs. LC fives and mayor. Calm and the state clerk. DHOs of the four districts and the CHO of Fort Worth City. SHO is MCH. Assistant, DHOs and Assistant CHO, Akana Chokel. Districted Educators and State Educator. Cultural Leaders, we expect to have the famous and the Minister of Health. Of the three cultural institutions, Thor Kingdom. Of the Gia Baramba and the Singa Bariso. And media institutions, all that are here, with TVs and the radios, all of them are created. Business community. They are already here, we have the Chairperson to the markets, we have the Chairperson to the tax driver. The Minister had a reason to make such a difference. Because it is a very big area and this is very important and what to do to them. Then, as you are sitting on the deck of the boat, we have. Chris, we expect that is an assistance, who's have a commitment as well as, however, it is. So, without wasting time, this is what we want to talk about. A question next speak as, not to repeat the protocol, thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen, you made my work simple and good morning to everyone. Protocol has already been said. Once again, my name is Julius Aron. I'm the logistics person for this city, but I'm studying in here for the City Health Officer. Who is with us, is in other engagements. I want to run with welcome you all to this beautiful city, Fort Worth City. Tsarville City and the hospital city. This engagement, as you can see, is going to look at the importance of organization. In protecting our children, families and everybody. And as you are aware, immunization has done wonders in our country. We have had so many emergency diseases. And at this point is COVID nineteen. When we introduced the immunization, COVID returned and now we are here. So, in this engagement, I expect to hear a lot about malaria. Malaria and how we can include malaria in our routine immunization. We have had the experience of COVID nineteen and yellow fever already. They are included in our routine immunization and it has worked. So my expectation as a technical person is very high. I know we shall achieve. But I want to thank what. Because this is his way of doing things. What gives us wisdom and use assurance to bring such innovations. So, at this time, we want to appreciate our partners. Healthing, a world's organization, Yumself. And Agas, they have done a lot to see that this vaccine is in place. You are aware that malaria has done us so much bad. It has caused a lot of deaths, especially in the hospitals. And as we told, you find one or two people already hospitalized because of malaria. So without wasting time, I want to invite you and invite you to actively listen and seize this opportunity. And promote malaria prevention and thank you.
Thank you, Julius Aron, on behalf of the City Health Officer. Dr. Sol, we have seen the same greetings. Due to other engagements, we are here. The office of the CHO, I never be alone. Without wasting time, I want to invite the LC five, we are going. Honorable, Tegeka James, Mungarama, in today, I think we welcome you and they come and give remarks. We don't have morale, we do clap and welcome. You know, when they mention, when they mention, you know what it means. Yes.
Thank you very much, my good friend and mother, Alari Ichun. The leaders, leaders here present. The resident district commissioners here present. The district chairpersons, all their representatives here present. The leaders, the cultural leaders here present, I've seen some of them. The chief administrative officers. The DHOs here present. Staff from the Ministry of Health here present. Our partners here present. And the grace, I've seen members of the grace here present. And all distinguished participants. James, Tegeka, Mungarama is my name. And the grace of God, I'm the district chairperson, William Gough. I want to thank you all for coming. And I also want to, to thank the organizers of this very important engagement. They have the engagement, Ministry of Health and the partners. I want to thank you very much for inviting us and more so as the leaders. I want to thank you and thank you very much. Today is an important day. Because we are discussing the most important, the crucial issues affecting our people and more so health. And mainly malaria. Malaria has continued to be a leading, leading killer, killer disease in Uganda. And yet, the government has put a lot of money in the fight against malaria. But despite that, it has continued to be the leading killer. And it takes almost, almost a quarter of Ministry of Health to protect it. Yet it continues to kill our people. Government has, has made many, many, many interventions. You remember, not long ago, we were given nets, a little bit of us. But still unfortunately, we are using them for different, different purposes. Some of them use them as, as, as breeding, breeding nets for, for breeding, for bats. Or they use them in gardens for breeding. Bets, nassal bets, a little bit, I suppose. For, for, a little, a little. So, I don't know, I should give my second here. I should do it, either or, you must, a little bit, the right, the wrong, the wrong. The cancer leaders are here, the leaders, leaders are here. The technical people are here, the chief administrative officers are here. The other diseases are here, the political leaders are here, why don't we join hands and fight for this? All these challenges that are affecting us in other countries like, 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 like America. China and others, you don't hear about malaria. It is not there, it is not there. In fact, if you, if, 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 I remember one, was it, one, one, one of the. I remember one, was it one, one, one of the citizens of America, Brazil, and the hydro of malaria. It was a national concern. But it is discussed in the parliament because one of them had a type of malaria. So it is easy to fight malaria. If you all drink hands, honestly, you can fight it. If you go to all the sales centers, the most cases that are put in there is malaria. So, yeah, but this was, they have strange hands. For us, as police leaders, we pledge to meet. We pledge to meet. We work hard in hand. And if the judge is so allowing you, you can correct more than it. As local leaders, you can use another method. To win the fight against malaria. But for us, we will be your back. We will win since this day. We must win. Win since this day, we must win. And various issues, the importance of aids. We have been teaching them, our business base in there. But of course it takes long. You have to say that as many things as possible for somebody to press. So we pledge that for meeting it, so this days of masses goes upon all of you, goes to train hands in the fight against malaria. The other diseases are also there. Uh, everybody's been, it is unfortunate that everybody's been used to keep it in, 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 despite the vaccines. In most of our health centers, if I'm, I'm not mistaken, you all have these vaccines. But very few people know about this vaccines. That, that H T V is there. They don't have a vaccine. And if it is there, if people come to them, they only take one dose. They don't take other doses. So let us train hands to stay safe out here. But we fight against these diseases, these killer diseases. It is easy. If we join hands, we can, we can attack them. Otherwise, we have no option, ladies and gentlemen. We have no option. These vaccines, we have to take them. We have not made our own vaccines. Even if we tell people, please, please, they wake my mass to kill us and the other. But we have no option. We have not made our own vaccines. We will, we'll be using them. And I don't think they want to kill us. If they so wanted, they would have made it as long as they could using other means, even without vaccine. So let us stay safe out here. The leaders leaders are here. The cultural leaders are here. Let us tell our people, these vaccines are safe. Because since we started using, uh, polio vaccines, we have indeed been reduced to a sustainable percentage. Malaria now, when we use these vaccines properly, I know it will reduce. And this will affect all other spheres of the economy. Because it touches everything. Politically, our people die of malaria. We lose water. Economically, the country is losing a lot of money. Especially, we are losing our people. So it is imperative that we all, all of us join hands in the fight against all these killer diseases. Once again, we will, the Ministry of Health, our partners, despite the challenges that the Russians see, we are continuing to work with them. But as leaders, let us also look for talented means. Minus the donors, I feel so well. I've seen, I've seen, I've had a, 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 under the region of the this people and this people are fine. They have totally reduced some, some extent. So we can, we can continue sustaining ourselves. Can't miss a single to, to what we receive is the end, the end, you is
The Rion is one of the most threatened. So I don't know whether I can grab it when it is. Okay, so this, I wish to welcome you all. And thank you for coming here for this wonderful moment. I don't have much to say, only to emphasize what my committee has just said here. To some of the organizers and these partners or ones who are trying as well. The Ministry of Health, thank you so much. More so, our lovely government in Rion for the prevailing peace and atmosphere for all this problem. We all know now as we speak in Congo, you cannot have this. As we speak in South Sudan, people cannot sit like this. So, the government with the leadership of our president will thank for this atmosphere. Well, health is wealth, as we all know. So if there is any attempt to minimize or to cover up anything to do with something that can disrupt health, then we all have to come and do hands and fight it. It is a collective responsibility for all of us. It matters for all of us. To other people, people say, ah, Ministry of Health will handle, it is not enough. It is a collective responsibility. I, I, I just want to add my voice to everyone who thinks that health matters. Let's be together and fight all this. It's good, all these recorders are here, I know so I won't come, but at least the message will reach them. And see how can build our country. A country with all these sicknesses cannot hide. I'm interested so time allow me, wish you the best, a very well nation. And if time comes for going back home, we shall pray for the road to take us back where we came from safely. Thank you so much. Thank you, Nani Sisi.
Everyone will give a sign, sign up.
I'm sure, then we hope the Rion has not had. Thank you, Wana Sisi. I want to invite the senior executive consultant for Kotejeru Hospital, who has put on two quotes, also the quote of the commissioner, Dr. Akbar Bahizzi.
The IT will find us on the way.
I think the battery is off.
So, good morning, everyone. I hope they stay morning. So, I want to, I introduce myself, but those who are aware, my name is Dr. Bahizzi Archibald Newton Sevahil. That is my name. And this morning I'm going to speak in two, two in one. I'm going to give remarks as myself. And also share the objectives of this session on behalf of the commissioner, the productive and child heroes. Today's theme is the importance of immunization in protecting children, families and life groups. But the issue is, how can we improve immunization coverage? And I think that's what has brought us here. Isn't it? Why is it that in our respective districts, okay, in the other region, as districts and cities, as sub-counties, as parishes and villages, we have not attained 100% immunization coverage. And I want to be very grateful to the chairperson in Nangawi, Intari. When, 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 when he spoke Italian, he was a health worker. So Intari is a health worker. Okay, if you are going to, if all of us can take that understanding and turn, that is good. That's good enough. It means that at every burial, at every ceremony, because all of us have a face where we go. Imagine that all of us, some of us go to the mosque on Friday. Then some of us on Sunday will go to church. But there are others who go to church in the evening. Some of us go to, to church on Saturday. Isn't it? And many others. So imagine that for every event, every meeting where you have more than two people, you speak about immunization. Immunization, okay? That would just be good enough. And therefore we will bring the health educators to develop for this region. For us who are still seeking being, we want to develop the community's department which is only inclusive, that all districts are represented. That is not a regional far hospital or the health department. I've not seen, Goro is here, I've not seen Nortakita. The DHO, so the DHO would be region, we have nominated him as our head of department, public case for our region, for, for the zone, that we shall have representation for all districts. ADHOs, DHOs, ADHOM, RPC, CAO, health educators, laboratory, surveyors, it is uncertain immunizations. That would not, would not think as a region as a hospital, but as a region. So and this, this arrangement of town hall is a beacon. This one, one will call a plaza. This one, one will call a plaza. And this is just the beginning. And when we go to our respective districts and cities, we can organize such in our respective parishes, sub-counties, to cover the entire respect. Because it makes a lot of sense that you have brought the community health worker or WST, the 20 years, the political, the technical, and other people, okay? To talk about our health, in this case, or focusing on immunization. That's because, or as I say, also we are the IT, a restaurant to lose some divestification. Divestification, some people distribute false propaganda of media. And when they brought the malaria, when they announced the malaria vaccination vaccine, people are saying, ah, they are going to kill you or what, what, for many other vaccines, remember? What happens in other countries, especially in those who, in those who have developed countries? For example, United Kingdom. What happens in United States of America, okay? It's what they want them to flash, that we, that we see. And for them, it is even more strict than we are here in Ghana. So if in, if in United Kingdom, they can have several vaccines in United children and even adults. In the USA, they do the same. Who are we? Who are not yet developed? To, to refuse what? To refuse the vaccination, because at this point, one, one does die. People are giving money, that's my thinking, to talk about, about such programs. So at the end of the day, we can perish, okay? Everybody wants to stay in Africa. Africa is sweet, okay? So you can see, for example, that is the United Kingdom. In France, we see there's still these whole vaccinations. For them, they start at eight weeks, okay? And, and you can see next, eight weeks, they give them six in one vaccines, so there are six vaccines. Ibseria, tetanus, a juice, himofacy, provenza, they, 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 okay? At 12 weeks, six one, six other vaccines. At 16 weeks, six other vaccines. And for us here, we are complaining, okay? Then subsequently, at one year, they give them the mabs, measles and rubella vaccine. And here, I think for us, what they gave us, measles and rubella vaccine, okay? So you could say, why are they giving us MR, why are they giving us MR? And what are they talking? But they, they, they want to give, where are they going? So then they wrote, they wrote 123, 12, 12, they were on sicko. Of, they are on sicko. Because the 20 countries is okay, 12 countries, here, or a district, so 20 countries is 12 countries. And that's what's, that's what's difference, okay? In the United States of America, you can see for them, they begin at two months. And they give several vaccines, okay? Even PCV and HIV, which we give here, rotavirus vaccine, which we give here, they also give it. But for us, also an autograph, now they are putting this one, two, three, two, they are putting more to brain, they are preparing the preparation, they are starting us. Our, 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 our fatality rate is still so high. Actually, even now, why? Because to grow as low as nine years and conceive. So, I want to, I want to, I want to be a good to doctor
Aba kubana ekun, mweni tewa gemel, mweni aboletwa gemel ekun. Ava tekele gurawa walebe inu. So we not have a hardy unit as result return. And this is very dangerous to the country, because in other regions have the same problem. And it's dangerous. Have either to go over a mile. Don't freaking hear it. Or a lot of. Ava, alazeire, to our government, okemesa, and our. And so, now, our home. And thus, my home. Okay? To where to go come. I'll be in busy, like a med, I'll be in busy, like a canisa. I'll be in busy, like a camera. To remember to where, for a volunteer, a team to, in the party, eto kemesa, avan, avan. You need public support for the planning of the 25 malaria vaccine introduction in Uganda. And in that potential, it's, it's, it's. So really, the other false, the other false series, eh? Eh? The other false propaganda that has been on video. Avan akutavatwala, but malaria is free to shigas. When they have time, when I was in the campaign, I think four years, four, five years ago. But you did the work, who are the malaria day, the one month. And I say, if we only prevented severe form of malaria in only one district, we would be able to provide for a casual grant to about 25 households. What does that mean? It's basically, a lot of what we are, but we get up. Okay, the question, no? About, oh, 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 oh.
And we shall remain standing for anthems. We went to the beginning of the anthems, national anthem, established anthem, we end with the key of anthem. Standard CD take us through. Okay, let's begin with the, we got an anthem. Oh Uganda, all our hope thee, within our future in thy arms. United free for liberty to give thou willst always stand. Be bound to thoma to hear thee. To ye Africa my shariki. Tu es seche tu eshe namani. Tu lizhe namale kowe tu. Tu muia yen tusonten tu yedine. Tu achipike tu imarike. Onochawetu ni kusayetu. Ie ndu muju muia yetu. Ah, turn key to the anthem. Abutange entare atoro. Karamalo mukumanfusi. Angirizo mwebiwa. Omukama weto murundi. Omukamen tare atoro. Karamalo mukumanfusi. Angirizo mwebiwa. And we can take our seats where we had prayed. Honorable Minister, hosted for better healthcare, a world in market and hand of this, we all come here. This town hall meeting, this more with Barasa, a community meeting, this more by engagement, an interaction. And the theme of this meeting is very clear, the importance of innovation in protecting children, families and life groups. It's very clear. Reverend Minister, our program is very clear, some presentations have already been made. And when you get again, you found Dr. Jen from the National Health was presenting the data concerning malaria and vaccination discount. The director of the National Health Hospital, Senior Bosantan, Dr. Riza has spoken. Both colleagues, the Chairperson, Esteban Yado, had given the acts of the both colleagues. The analyst, Trogba, had spoken. Now, when you get again, you found your presentation from Dr. Eva Jose Jen. I request you allow her proceed with the presentation. Then we shall invite Dr. Henry Melissa speak. Then he will invite the minister to give a keynote speech. Then, after we have a panel discussion, those that are supposed to be part in the panel are aware and ready to take part in the panel. So far, that is our program. I request Jen and Eva Jose to take us through her presentation. Thank you.
Honorable Minister, Executive Director, the G H Coles, corporate of Zat, allow me to continue. I had spoken to this slide and at the time the Honorable Minister came in, I was trying to summarize in the local language that can be understood by all of us. So, ma de ngamba, iti, wetu tu nuu yaripoti ya fe, eti tongoleche e goblamu, eh ya mukuli bili, abili musatu. Abili musatu ane muu ya. Chi ra man ti, gurimua ala ba ngaba tukumi, ngaba silela yini, na ne ba kenapu ta ya waka. Ava luwate, ava dya ne ba la wa niwa da yo. Ava luwate ba ba kumi, ngaba lipenchi balinze, ava luwate basati kubana, ba 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 ri na mshu yaguanse. Gurimua la ba ba lipitana, ngaba ina, bali, bali, bali wade, ava wade bali lipu basatu, ba 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 ri na mshu yaguanse. Ate gurimu naku, ava tukumi na mkaa ka ba fa, na e ngakuli kubo, ba na. Wetu nuu irene, eh balo biya fe, wetu nuu ya abaana, aba fava we we bitana, abaana namu ba na. Ava na, aba riwa suameyake etan, ba be ra ba, ba be ra baana, ba ba weze tu, tu ba na, moki na kuma kichkumi. Na e wetu nuu ya abaana ba fa, aba riwa suameyake etan, ba fa omuwa de muu na. Asatu muu mukaada, kubuchkumi wa wo, asatu muu mukaada ba fa siyaguanse. Ate government ya fe, eh wa yo uana na muu ji, na e ate uano tuki la ba omu tuwa ge na, etagala, ibali muu ya mi kuwa wo, ngatai sa sura. Ne tuku nuu ire, fa mi ire muu, ense de sin ga, anga yu ba ba fa miuganda, kaba ya ma ba tva tanu mukaada. Gurimua akar, omu tuomu, afina, omusuke miu di, igbe bidi, wo be sa tu. Na e gurimua ruu di, omu tuwa fa, omusuke ya. Fa miire, nga te kuse dagala wablo, utangla ne tuka mutoariyo, gula gula yo, muto, muto no, eh furu niye mi tuari sa tu. Ne dagala tuki la, ruwele duwa we, kakachi tu ya aba tva tanu mukaada, guri mtafune miu di, wa kachi wa miu di, wo be sa tu. O lo fa miire, gurimua akar, furu niye sin be sin, kana wa tsoko ro kwa la ma wo. Eh ra, e gwaanga, tuwa de te tuta, ne bui muke ndezo muu lo wa baana ba fa, ngaba riwa suameyake etan. Na e ate, chi tu e amale ba na fa ba la la, etu na chi tu kwa wo. Eh chi te ke san, tuki ya eh yechokola, eh kwa tuku na ma wa ba tukue ba ba, ngaba cha fa ni omusuke ya we si di, na da la ba na ba tu. Chi zo kuanga, eh so ngaloa chi te tuku se, etu la ba. Ne chi la la, wetu nuu ya ensi de za, kola vaccine etda, utanka pili kumi na muu ya, pa i ba da, tu ba kumi na muu ya kati. Wa i we si ngakana, ngara uki kenya zata, ni kada, pili kumi na muu ya. Eh bi ba le, eh bi fa yo, bi na ga, antino, chi ba ke ide za, okfa kuaba tu, ba tu etu kumi aba fa ba ke ide za, dagala ba tu, ba kumi na basatu. So, ngaba ma zo kosa vaccine niye mu, na te na tuki la, o kumari da yo, dagala ba ba te ba cha ta wa na. Chi ma ni ka chi wa kose, kuchi za lo kuanga, omu lo, kuchi se no. So, osanga, eh chi tu mfu chi niye, chi kwa tuku na kosa vaccine niye mu, tuya ke ide za ba tu ba fa. Ne guru omu lo, kutwa ba yo ke ide za tu, ke ide ze da. That's how that starts, slide summarized there. Next slide. When you are planning in 2022, after guidelines from Navi H home, the country was told to prioritize those districts that have moderate, high and very high transmission. And see, that's what you're seeing in a, in a orange, it has 2022 incidents. It's what we used to plan our vaccine rollout. And in that regard, where are you seeing dark orange, the next orange and the lighter orange? The lighter orange is moderate transmission, the next orange is high transmission and then the dark orange was then very high transmission. Then the light brown and white is very low transmission. So according to the World Health Organization, the light brown and white is not priority for the vaccine rollouts. Because they are low and very low transmission. Just to break it down for us to understand it easily, because all of us here need to understand what we mean by very high and what we mean by high and what we mean by very low. Let's just go back to that one, because we don't understand it. So the very high, these are people who are sick and they are coming to the facility, but they are coming from the community. It means that in that community, for the very high, every time you meet a thousand people, 750 will be carrying malaria parasites. And that means every time the mosquito bites, it has very high chances. And the next brown, that means that every time you meet, you meet a thousand people, about 450 will be carrying malaria parasites. And then the moderate means that every time you meet a thousand people, 250 will be carrying malaria parasites. So this is how we classify and so, because there we have, we have very high chances, that is where we started. Of course, that picture kept changing into 2023, but we know that our picture is not stable, so we kept changing it. If I can summarize it for the, for the, for some of us who want to understand it better. Where we are introducing, aba tukue ba ba lukumi, ngaba liu chi tu nguechon, osanga ngali, usanfua atan, ba ino koka, o reto mshu yagwati. Eh yote, usingwa kubo muu ji. Ava dakoka kubo muu ji, gurigo sangaba tukumi, bi na ma atan, ba 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 ino koka. Ava dakoka kuba, omu ji, gurigo sangaba tukumi, bi di wa atan, ba 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 ino koka. Ne chi te ke san, chi ensi di, we be, eh no yechon kurya, eh ike, usingwa, guri wele, mebe na ne niksa, minji no. Eh ra tukula be, yote tuwa atan, likite, eh ra kati aba kulebeza, aba riwa no. Omurime, yote gula ba, ne uano uano we tu, eh kujia ke tu, bebe tu tio gula ba. Te tu ni na, no, te tu ngaba yeri wa gulu, te chukute no. So, na e ate na fe, tu ni no kore, no gula ba, ma tu fu ka white, because it is so ka. Next slide. Which are the regions that are contributing to malaria deaths? Toro, where we are, is one of the regions. At that time, we contributed 12% to the deaths. Followed by Western Ale and followed by Usoba, followed by Nyoro, followed by North Central and followed by Acholi. Toro here, mainly the regional referral hospital is where most of these cases come from. But notably, these cases are not coming from Fort Potto Town or, they are not coming from, they are coming from districts like Hamenge. They are coming from districts like Chehewa, they are coming from districts like Utoroko. And some of these districts, actually, most of them have many refugees. And so, that's why you see a similar picture in Nyoro. Nyoro, most of them are coming from districts like Chikube, Buisa and then of course Kakumiro. Kakumiro also has people that are traveling from areas like Chigesi and then they come and settle there. Remember, when you're coming from Chigesi, you've not suffered malaria and now you come into an area where, where there's some malaria. When you get infected, you definitely will come in as severe malaria, but because you're not a person of the place, you may be there to seek care. By the time you come, you're into severe malaria and you're dying. North Central, still we have some Nariu groups coming from, from some places like Komansidi. Sorry, North Central, we have some people coming into the regional referral hospital like Malabo. And we have, we have another problem of people coming from private sector, where they delay. Because the private sector person wants to first get money and yet they are not adhering to the guidelines provided by Ministry of Health. So North Central, and by the time they send them to the, to the big hospitals, they are really, really sick. Actually, you saw them up, they are, they are still buried up and so is Lamo. South Central, we have areas like Komansidi giving us trouble. Bugisu, their cases are coming from Bukevi. Tesol, the cases are high. Karamoja used to be one of the highest until we introduced the Sisono Malaria Chemoprevention, so now it's one of the lowest. So who can impose most of their cases to Bugisu? I am explaining this because I know questions are going to come through when we see that, how come Toro has very high cases? And yet we are giving a few districts a vaccine. Those districts that are receiving the vaccine is where their cases are coming from. Next slide. So you're seeing that districts that are really registering high cases and for each of them, we understand the reason. You'll see that most of them that have regional referral hospitals actually have a lot of cases. Because the, most of our communities delay to seek care, there's very low risk perception for malaria. Recently, we lost a student in one of the prominent schools, but when you listen to that story, you'll understand our community perception for malaria. It's done complaining in the morning that I'm not feeling well. The father took her to a clinic, they did a slide, she was positive, they gave her treatment and they took her to school. Because malaria, as all of us think, it's a simple disease. She reached school, she goes to the nursery, every day she was trying, she was not tolerating it, it was coming back. Until she felt bad, she went to the school nurse. By the time the school nurse saw, she was already into severe malaria and she never survived. So it's a true perception of how most of us think malaria, it's, it's simple disease, but it is not as simple. All these cases we are seeing here, why our regional referral hospitals are congested? It's because if people were seeking care, the moment they felt bad or unwell, wouldn't be losing patients. But most of the people going, that's why you see, you're seeing Boyman, Vale, you may drop off the institutes to be part of this list. Nebi, Nebi is like a regional referral, where it is, you're seeing Kabarole, Kampala, everywhere you have a regional referral, the cases are high. Because our patients delay to seek care. Next slide. So not that Uganda as a country is not doing much, we, we have a Uganda malaria elimination and strategic plan of 2021, 2025, it's about to end. In there, we designed measures or interventions to fight malaria. We didn't just design, we also did appropriate allocation of these interventions. Because we know that some interventions can't work in some areas. So the different color codes show the different intervention packages. Measures were put together in packages and allocated certain areas. And these are the color codes you see. Where are you seeing C E? It means case management, that is test and treat. It's done at the health facility, it is done at the community for the children under five and that one is done in the entire Uganda. Then where are you seeing I P T P? That is intermittent preventive treatment of malaria in pregnant. This is prevention treatment given to the pregnant woman to prevent them from getting malaria. This one is done for the entire Uganda. Then mosquito nets, the one, where are you seeing L L I? This is mosquito, mosquito nets, we are going to call it them mosquito bed nets. Because once we put the one in bed, then some people don't use, so we call them mosquito nets. And these, these ones are given to all Ugandans everywhere. So every three years, we come and do a campaign, next year we are starting another campaign. But the campaign will help us achieve good coverage, but of course we know that some nets get lost, some nets disappear. And yet what gives us mileage is a coverage of over 85%. So we continue to give mosquito nets through anteneto and immunization clinics. This one is done countrywide. And now we have special interventions for specific parts of Uganda. Where are you seeing blue? On top of the three that I've mentioned, there's the light blue, we have Indawa residue spraying. We spray the walls of the house so that when the mosquito comes in to feed, as it rests on the wall, it picks the chemical. The chemical weakens it and then it's not able to feed and it eventually dies. This is Indawa residue spraying, it was best of the behavior on the most of the mosquito that transmits malaria. It feeds inside the house and rests inside the house. That is why we approached it that way. So we picked the areas where malaria was too much, those are the light blue areas, the Western Ale, Tesol region, Ebito, Lamo and Usoba. Now where are you seeing a dark blue? We are, we are doing the test and treat, the prevention of malaria in pregnancies, the mosquito nets. And we are also treating the children under five at the community. Where are you seeing light blue? Where are you seeing pink? We are doing the other interventions that we do everywhere, the ones I mentioned. And there we do something unique. The children under five are given medicine to prevent them from getting malaria during the time when malaria transmission is so high. That is the Karamoja region, the pink. And that is called Sisono Malaria Chemoprevention. I know you'll ask me, that's why isn't it done in Renshore? Renshore, the transmission is two times. There it's once in one prolonged period, May 7th, so you can know and give the medicine. But also, when you look at Karamoja, and Karamoja had the highest transmission. Every time you met people, 100 people in Karamoja in 2019, every time you met 100, 34 of them would be carrying malaria parasites. While if I can give an example of Tolo, then every time you met 100 people in some parts of Tolo, like Fort Potto, less than five had malaria parasites. So you'll understand why we gave Karamoja special attention. And then those of you who have never been to Karamoja, you can't spray there. The beautiful houses cannot accommodate spraying. And then those people's way of life, they prefer keeping out to look after their animals and at times they move with their children. So we needed to think through something that works for them. Then where you're seeing light, where you're seeing light yellow, we are doing lava siding. The baby mosquito survives in water, so we put chemical in the water so that it doesn't grow. Where you're seeing dark yellow, we only do the other interventions with lava siding, but while it's light, we are also doing management at the community level. So we are trying to say here that the vaccine is not going to come and replace this intervention, but it's going to come and fit in there. It's going to be part of the package. So here, we try to say that the vaccine is not a magic bullet. That ah, once a child receives the vaccine, then they will not be, they will be very safe. Here, we're trying to emphasize that for you to reduce the burden of malaria, you must combine measures. They work better together. In that part, that is totally dark blue, there you're not doing anything, isn't this what most of us do? We don't use the mosquito net, we don't close windows, when you are sick, we don't seek care. And that's why we have malaria always in our community. And then when you use the mosquito nets, you reduce by 45% and this is if you use correctly. This is if you use every day, you care for the net and you care for, for your dress, you wash it when it's started, don't with, with, with omo and jip, but with baso. You don't hang it under the scorching sunshine, but you put it under the shade. You look after it and use it every day and so it is effective. This is when you get the 45%, but the Uganda, what we picked from the literature of Uganda, actually, we achieved about 20% because of our ways of treating the nets. How about when you use the mosquito nets and the Sisono Malaria Chemoprevention, you saw, there you reduce by 78%. And when you do the nets, the Sisono Malaria Chemoprevention and vaccine, you reduce the burden by 92%. So here, that typical message is that let's use the combinations together. Currently, we have 14 antigens when you add the malaria vaccine. We have the BCG, that is for tuberculosis. We have the BPT, that is for the pharyia, patousis and tetanus. And then we have the measles rubella, we have the yellow fever. We have polio, we have the diarrhea, rotavirus, we have tetanus and we have that for cancer of the subject. Here they are trying to show us how UNEP has been performing. What I want us to pick here, the reds, the poorly performing vaccines, the ones that are not being sold for and the ones in red. Maybe to regroup discussion, we need to ask ourselves key questions. One of them is the measles rubella, especially the second dose. The other is yellow fever. We also have hepatitis B zero dose. And rotavirus greatly improved, but also the tetanus, the pharyia, the one our women receive. What is happening around these vaccines? Where is the problem? I think we need further discuss that. Next slide. Here we are trying to select to show how the different, the different vaccines, but you can still see that throughout the years, measles rubella two, the one who get at one and a half years, is not yet picking it. And yet we are getting outbreaks in different corners. Can we pull up our socks? Can we do better? Next slide. Here they are trying to show us how we are performing, but I think Renshore, we are not with greatly improved. You can, you can see, most of it is brain saved for a few yellows, which I think can also improve. Can the leaders from this, those districts see themselves, where we have, we have any yellows in the Renshore region? Is that Chenchu that I'm seeing? As if I'm seeing Chenchu somewhere. Hmm, we need to work a little bit harder. What are some of these things we can work on? Next slide. And here they are trying to show us, are we happy with, with our region? Are we okay? Do 120% 100%, what can we do different? So, let's see the next slide. So look, having looked at that, we have the malaria situation, we have the performance seen. So clearly, we all appreciate that we need the malaria vaccine. Vaccine, malaria, to get it. Na e ate tu la, be ne we tukula. Tuwa te tuki okula ba, ngatukula muu ji, muriyoke meyala, vaccine na esoko ro kuka kubana. I think that discussion will be very important. So here, we are trying to show that as we introduce the vaccine, it's not going to be a campaign. It's going to fit into the routine immunization that is there. that is led by the Uganda Expanded Program of Immunization. That program is a very well organized program. It operates on five structures. And these structures are guided by the building blocks of those systems. The pillar number one is on program management. We have service delivery, we have logistics and supply chain. Then we have advocacy, social behavior change communication. Then we have surveillance, monitoring and evaluation. Just to make it simple for some of our friends, kindly, let's go back a bit. Program management. We're going to be playing with Z, we're going to be playing with Z. Service delivery, I'm going to say. I'm going to say services, we're going to say. So we're going to say, oh, my, yeah, go away. Oh, 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 my, yeah, oh, oh, my, yeah, oh, go away, it's very bad, oh, my, yeah, go away.
Working with routine immunization. This vaccine is going to be provided through the routine immunization. It is going to be provided at the health facilities, at the static clinics, and then also at the community outreachers for the hard-to-reach and at the lone outreach posts. So who is eligible? Any child that is six to eleven months is eligible to start. And once they start, for as long as they are still below five years, they must be supported to complete the four doses. You're not a beneficiary of this vaccine until you have completed the four doses. So the first dose will be given at six months, and the next dose will be given at seven months, and the third dose will be given at eight months. And then the booster dose will be given at one and a half years. Please note that that happens at a less busy time when a child has stopped coming, so there's some work to do. So in order to achieve that, there are some key activities we've been doing, like orienting teens like you, because we know you're very important, and messages on radios, these are ongoing, and checking if our different stakeholders are ready. This was completed. Vaccines arrived on the seventh of March, and they were distributed to the districts and eventually facilities. We can hear from our friends like from Boniboujonia. They can let us know if any of their facilities are missing the vaccine, because the information you have at the centre is that every facility has received. As of now, we already did trainings, both at the national level, district levels, sub-county level, including orientation of our DRVHCs. We continue to do our radio talk shows. We already assess assessments at final time. We continue to update our top management, the Immunization Coordination Committee, the Technical Coordination Committee on a quarterly basis. The launch and introduction happened on the second of April in Apache District. We picked Apache because it has the highest prevalence in the world. We should, we were supposed to immediately deploy supervisors, but because we had competing priorities within the yellow fever, we shall, that was postponed, probably we'll get to it after Easter. And then we shall do a post-immunization evaluation to see how well we're working, and then support supervision. We've done a lot around communicating. Those are the things we are doing. Next slide. UNEPID did not start yesterday. We've been working. All we ask for is to get stronger. This vaccine has to work with a strong immunization. We are assessing what we are doing. We are trying to see if people have the messages. Next slide. These are the number of things we have done. We've oriented the pediatric association, the different professional bodies, we've engaged the calumetarians. We are getting with, some of you must have seen the messages. We've engaged religious leaders, cultural leaders. And this is this that we're doing here, we've done elsewhere. Yeah, they are showing us how we've engaged the different stakeholders. Next slide. That's all engagement. This is now top management. These materials are available for the different stakeholders. They are there in that number, and we continue to produce more. You can pick some. Next slide. Next slide, please. These are the different materials. They are showing them there. These are the different things we have done, born, kindly born. So these materials, these messages are there. He messages, is vaccination important? Yes, it is. It's going through these applications. Who is eligible? Children six to eleven. What should I do when a child misses? Please report. The vaccine is an injection. It's not a tablet. It's not a drop. It's given on the right hand here. How many doses? Four, I already told you. Six months, seven months, eight months, and then the fourth dose at eighteen months. When the child doesn't complete, they don't benefit. When you don't complete the four doses, you will not realize that benefit, so they must complete. Because even when you get immunized, it's the natural way. You need a number of exposures before you can acquire immunity. So this is why you also need more. But studies are going on. At some point, we shall get a single dose. Okay? At some point, but for now, we are working with four doses. How does a male, is it safe? This vaccine is safe, very safe. There are no side effects. It's pain, some bit of swelling, because it's an injection, okay? But these are self-limiting. Irritability, because the baby feels pain, they'll be irritable. That's where the irritability. And then fever, because of the way the vaccine works. As it generates that immunity, there are some inflammation and changes in temperature. So that is why a child gets a fever. And very rare febrile convalescence, and these are self-limiting. We all know febrile convalescence. For us back home, we call it a year away. When a child gets a fever, usually they don't convulse if it's not well managed. And these are self-limiting. Some anti-vaxxers are saying epilepsy. Please note, it's not documented epilepsy. They are saying children, mothers die because they were vaccinated. There's nothing like that. They are saying cerebral malaria. There is knowledge which are pointing to cerebral malaria because of vaccination, okay? And that is why, when I started, I told you, in the twenty twenty four reports, four hundred and forty thousand children and five died of malaria, but none of them died because they received malaria vaccine for where it's already been given. So that's very important. Usually, these side effects are self-limiting. After twenty-four hours, they are gone. But if they go beyond forty-eight, go to the clinical swapa. Will the private sector give out? Yes, they will give out, but this vaccine is free. Okay, it is free. Who should not receive? Adults and children above five. Why we are rationalizing, okay? We are using the little we have. We don't have enough vaccines, but also the vaccines have been well studied in children, and children are more vulnerable, so we are starting with them. For now, the adults, because of your repeated exposures, you already have natural immunity. Let's maintain other interventions. You have to fast test. If a child has no symptoms, you don't need to fast test them. But if a child has symptoms, please fast assess and test them. If they have malaria, fast treat the malaria when they recover, vaccinate. Because when you vaccinate them, when they have malaria, this malaria might progress and cause complications that they think it is a side effect of the vaccine. Lastly, does malaria vaccine replace other interventions? No, I already said this. I'm not going to repeat. Why is the vaccine not administered to adults? That one we can even answer, because I've said this. We highly recognize you as key stakeholders. We know you interact with a lot of people. Without you, we can't reach these people. Kindly, for where we can't reach, be there to communicate that vaccines work. Even the new one, malaria vaccine, works. So people should come and partake of it. Mobilize. This information is being given to you so that you understand better and involve us clear limits and misconceptions. We commit to work with you. We've already developed materials for your reference. Welcome on board. And we pray for a very successful collaboration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, doctor. I'll take back, I tell you, you are eligible in this. I request everyone to raise your hands, say, I'm going to expose you. Yes, can we do a little bit of a stand, yeah, and see if I can expose you. As I tell you, embarrassing, thank doctor for this lengthy presentation. I tell you. You pick those flowers.
I pick the flowers.
Yes. Then you go a little somewhere, you pick from other corners.
From other, pick from the other corner. From the front, from behind, from down, this put in the basket, this put in the basket. Doctor, are you receiving?
The doctor receives, all those flowers are yours. You can take back your seats. Thank you, Atteni. And thank you, doctor. She has been very good enough. She has managed to translate what she could in Uganda. I'm sure we're all at bar. And now that we're expecting to have the doctor, Tener Mulesa, the chairperson of the Health Science Commission. I think he may not be with us or he's training us. But without wasting time, I want to invite the executive consultant, senior executive consultant for the General Fire Hospital, to invite the minister. Doctor, you're welcome. You'll fit in those shoes. I look, they're saying, the chairperson is fine. I want to invite the vice-chairperson, who else have you talked about, to come and welcome the minister. She's going to give her keynote speech. I do, let's come to the chairperson. The chairperson, where the chairperson is going? Here she is. Yes, Madam Chairperson, you're welcome.
Ladies in the house, ladies in the house.
Then after the keynote speech from the minister, we shall have a part of discussion. I've created a request to resolve the questions. We shall do that once after the part of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, good traitor. Ladies in the house, good afternoon. Yes, there. Honorable Minister, I'm all, I'm very grateful, ma'am. Protocol observed. My name is Kagou Ed. I'm the district vice-chairperson of the municipal. I'm very delighted to be in front of you. And I am happy for this engagement. I thank the partners, plus the ministry, for organizing this fantastic town hall meeting as a dialogue we are going to discuss more. They have given me the honor to invite the Mr. for primary healthcare. I'm all the honourable man, great. You are most welcome, mama. This is your time to come and give us your plea, not the audience is yours. Thank you so much.
Give us, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. Kindly allow me to write in the protocol that has already been established by all the previous speakers in the interest of time. I really want to welcome you to this meeting. It's very, very important for our health, for our wellbeing, and for our future. We can only have a future which is with a healthier population. If the population is not healthy, I don't think we have a good future. I want to thank the team from the Ministry of Health, the executive director of the Regional Fire Hospital here, who have really put in a lot of effort to organize this meeting in partnership with our usual partners, as you can see up here. I want to thank you doctors who came and gave you very good explanation. I just wanted to tell you, doctor, that here people don't understand Uganda. You should have gumbled some Ruto or Yankole or Uchiga, those words they understand. But some Uganda words are really far from what we mean in Ruto. Because even me, I was like struggling, like this word, what exactly does it mean? But thank you so much for the explanation you have given, especially on the efficacy of the vaccine, of the malaria vaccine. I want to first of all, from the onset, tell you that in this country, seventy-three percent of the diseases that we are battling as well as from here are all prevented. How are they preventable? Some diseases are diseases of last time. The life we lead, sometimes it's not so healthy. And the others, how they can prevent it? Is that the children are not immunized on time. Our mid-parents who get immunization at the time they're given birth at the facility, they leave in a car that shows them the schedule for the subsequent vaccination, they don't go back. Sometimes out of complacency, sometimes out of carelessness, and sometimes they forget. And then you find children falling sick from diseases that rather have been prevented or getting too sick and family is spending a lot of money to treat them. So I thank you so, so, so much for making time to come and attend this meeting. I'm noticing, I don't know whether there are people from Toronto Kingdom. Are you here? Odhingia, are you here from Odhingia? And from Singa Waranjuru? Thank you. Are there religious leaders in this audience? I thank you so much. So these are people who interact with communities all the time. I remember during Covid, there was a lot of talk about Covid vaccines killing people. Did you hear about it? So was it Covid that was killing people or the vaccine? Before the introduction of vaccine, so many people came across the world. When the vaccine was introduced, Covid is now history, true of us. So how can we really tell people that vaccines are not important? The first time I got Covid, I got re-vaccinated. And I can bear witness, the young man walking out, he's come here. Three days I was in my house, I didn't get out. I didn't get hospitalized, no oxygen, ready to be. But for three days, I had a lot of pain on my body. I get off of poor flu. But I had body X for three days, and then I'm back. The second time I got Covid, I had been vaccinated, I didn't feel anything. As working, I tested personally, I just decided to stay at home, but I wasn't feeling anything. The third time I didn't go to booster, I didn't feel anything at all. So the vaccine is one. But the first time I was injected with Covid vaccine, I really felt terrible. I even called doctor Diana, I had not yet joined the Ministry of Health. Thank you guys, I've been vaccinated, maybe the poison. I feel so much pain around my body. She said, take just a banana. For me, I went down for a week. That's what she told me, yes, she's a doctor, a consultant physician, a permanent secretary. She said she went down for a week after the vaccination. So bodies react to vaccines. Even the children, remember, I have some of you mothers and fathers who have taken your children from vaccination. When they come home and get a fever, and you can't carry it, and even go back to the hospital, but the child eventually picks and is prevented from this disease. So I would like to really thank Path for organizing these town hall meetings across the country and for your continued partnership with us as well as from here. Your efforts in facilitating community dialogue, promoting health education, and supporting immunization outreach, and are really commendable. These engagements have bridged the gap between communities and the health systems, allowing us to listen and learn from one another. Routine immunization remains one of the most effective and lifesaving health interventions available. It protects children and communities from preventable deadly diseases such as measles, polio, epiphelia, tetanus, and tuberculosis. Now, you know that the vaccines are really important. There are some diseases we don't hear about, some words which used to treat measles are no longer there. I remember I got measles when I was not young, not old, but I got measles in nineteen ninety-three. It put me down together with my sister, who was actually expecting her second born. She wasn't admitted. But my dad said, being vaccinated, it doesn't move why you had measles again. But it was many years, because you are immunized at nine months. I think it was a wave of measles, but it doesn't exist anymore. I don't see many people get measles. I have children, they are now adults, all of them Gen Z's, but none of them has ever got measles. They have never got measles, they don't even know what it means. We have seen significant progress across reducing mortality and improving overall health and outcomes across Uganda over the years. Immunization not only saves lives, it also reduces the burden of our health system by preventing disease outbreaks and long-term disability. I think you've seen people who have brought cerebral malaria, and from then they become kind of vegetables. I don't know whether it causes also mental retardness. Some children who get that severe malaria may never have a proper functional brain. Or they become dysentery, I don't know, something like that. The government of Uganda is pretty committed to strengthening the immunization program. And UNEPID, and the doctor explained all this. We have integrated routine immunization into our social health service offered as part of primary healthcare, and we continue to expand access through outreach and facility-based services. I would also like to announce that one of our major and recent milestones in the introduction of the malaria vaccines in selected districts in the region. The malaria vaccine will be an additional malaria prevention tool and will be used in combination with existing malaria prevention interventions. Don't say my children has malaria, but my kid was immunized, sorry. I don't have to treat this malaria, you can't treat. But as they continue finishing their doses, then they become, at least they build some immunity in their bodies. It will be another layer of protection for our children against one of the leading killers and yet preventable disease in Uganda. I hope you've already known that we lose sixty people to malaria every day. More than any other disease, even HIV doesn't kill as many people. Only Covid may become and swept a lot of adults and children ourselves. So ladies and gentlemen, I pray that you put this in your mind. Go back to the communities, educate them, explain to them. Because vaccine hesitance brought problems to many, many people over the years. Over says, oh, the vaccine is not working, but you have it, you're taking it. They are the ones who actually go down under the weight of sickness. So despite our achievements in primary healthcare, particularly immunization, we still face challenges in ensuring every child is fully immunized in some areas. We continue to see gaps due to access barriers, vaccine hesitance, or even lack of awareness. These challenges can lead to pockets of low coverage, putting our communities at risk of vaccine-preventable disease outbreaks. The other day, we had a caller, you are even lucky that we are here. If that caller had not been contained, I don't think we'd be here talking. Just one person who came from the club affected so many others, I'll make another story. She died, her baby died, you know? And she was Muslim, the people who prepared the body to bury it got a caller, but some of them weren't treated. It's a deadly world we live in, especially us who are within the Congo Basin, who are prone to getting a lot of pandemics. So we need to be more careful and be each other's keepers. And that is why community engagement is so crucial and critical. We must continue to work together. Parents, political, religious, and cultural leaders, teachers, health workers, and everyone to educate and mobilize our communities to fight against diseases. I want to especially recognize the role of the village health teams and community health extension workers, the choose. Who are the backbone of primary healthcare in Uganda. You are much appreciated. Thank you for your service. You render a service which has not been made of pain. We appreciate the sacrifice you make to reach out to every household within the help and with the health intervention. Indeed, you are our heroes in the community health and primary healthcare. I call upon parents who are here and elsewhere, I know the message will reach out. And caregivers, because some people don't have parents, to take responsibility and ensure that your children receive all the vaccines, especially the malaria vaccine that was launched at the beginning of this month. We have to ensure children who start their malaria vaccination, complete all the four doses if they are to achieve maximum benefit from the vaccine. I want to just give you a personal experience. I got malaria in nineteen eighty-seven, I was young, got malaria, and from then I've never got malaria. And I've never slept in a mosquito net in porto. And I have never seen even one mosquito in my house, because this place is really cold. But outside the cold areas, like if you go to Weyemkasese, there's a lot of malaria. But also, we have a lot of critters, remember? We have a lot of water bodies, which are really breeding grounds for mosquitoes, and a lot of vegetation, they are all breeding grounds. So if we can keep away from stagnant waters around our homes, overgrown grass, and also plant some grass, doctor, you must teach people to plant some grass that protects them from malaria, especially around the houses. I think there's most of them, the others are younger than so, they have most of them around my house. I've never seen a mosquito near my home. So Kalifua, I actually have Kalifua as well, and a lot of it. I have never seen one mosquito in my house, and I live right opposite, right here, so I don't get mosquitoes. So kindly, sleep also under mosquito net if you have these mosquitoes near you, so that you can protect our children. Let us also continue fighting misinformation of vaccines with facts and build community trust and confidence in our immunization program. Routine immunization is safe, it's free, and available at all public facilities and during outreach across the country. With assurance, continued support, with assurance, continued support from GAVI and many others, all our partners, really WHO, UNICEF, CHAI, we continue to strengthen vaccine delivery and improve the cold chain supply systems and support our frontline health workers to reach every child with the vaccines they need. And as I conclude, I want to really thank each and every one of you for your dedication, your commitment, your time that you have given this meeting, and also the support that you give us as a health sector and the support you give to our children. Immunization is not just a health issue, it is a community responsibility. Imagine how much money you would spend. Imagine how much money you would spend when your child has malaria, yet you had a vaccine which was free and you didn't take the child for it. The kind of money you spend out of public expenditure to hospitals will be too much. Let us make this epoch count. Take your child for vaccination and encourage others to do so as well. Together, we can secure a healthier, brighter future for the children of Uganda. I thank you so much for your kind attention. May good rest.
Thank you, the minister. I think Catherine knows how to greet her, as she's getting her seat. Um, let's approach it. Thank you, thank you, Catherine, you take our seats. Um, we have a part of discussion, but I want to inquire from you. Lunch is ready. Should we have lunch first? Then we come and do a part of discussion and respond to questions. So we discuss first?
Yes.
The challenge is when we discuss, we hope for lunch first, we may not, the minister may not be in our discussion. So let's do a part of discussion. Uh, briefly, we are going to give, we are going to give each, uh, between five to seven minutes. Then we have our questions, because some questions have come from the presentations doctor has made. When you ask something to ask from the minister, the director, the senior consultant of the General Fire Hospital. So those questions are pending. I request we do a part of, we conclude, then we go for lunch at once, and we power. Lunch. Yes. Now, I want to invite our panelists. I want to begin with, um, Madame Catherine Catherine, who is a senior health educator, Cabral District. She has been with us, she has served as a health educator for great Cabral, not, not everyone including Catherine Sade, but Unyankahu for Porta City. She has been our health educator, our mentor, and I think she's known very well in the ministry. Atheni, colleagues, let's welcome her, as she takes her seat as our first part of this. I also want to welcome Rudy Wilson, who is the N D H O, Doroka District. And he was once acting N D H O, Doroka District. Uh, Mr. Rudy Wilson, you're welcome. Catherine, take your seat. I also want to invite, uh, the Minister of Health, uh, Wamba Wazurulu, Wamba Wab, Oudigia, King of, sorry. Oudigia Wab, Wamba. Yes, Oudigia Wabamba, the Minister of Health. Well, she's there. I was not one friendly with the, they had a profile, we mentioned the whole profile, Tupa here have done a lot. But, uh, Reverend Minister, you're welcome. I also want to welcome Haji Ashil. He just fresh from America, God familiar, is?
Maybe.
About two weeks, he was in America. Haji Ashil, Ray Kayono, is a health coordinator for the Muslim Paul Yor, Rachel. And he's a student, you have had him on duty within health programs, who came from. Catherine, Haji, take your seat, let's send him his seat by trapping. We expected to have a else five, uh, Kedonjo, uh, Mr. Obayayo, whom we never to reach because we kept colleague, the phone was on, he was unable to speak. Uh, let's welcome the N D H O, Unyankahu District, Doctor Obet Richard.